Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the agendas amended? Sean, call the question those in favor. Carried. Two A minutes of May 4th, 2020. Is there any corrections that need to be made?
Hello?
Hey, hey, it's Bryce, I'm here now.
Thank you.
Okay, no changes, no corrections in the minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes of May 4th meeting? Sean again, big high five. Call the question those in favor. Okay, carried. Business arising from the minutes, we have an item Frank Wilson.
Yes, so the fire chief contacted our department again today saying that the logs are still not gone and wants something done about it. So either the logs, we enforce that the logs have to leave soon as possible or immediately, or provide them with an extension. And because this is a development permit that was issued by the NPC, you guys have to make a decision on what you want done.
It's Bryce, haven't they started to remove them? I saw a bunch of trucks there the other day. The truck way it looked like.
The trucks are loaded, but they're still sitting on site and they have not moved from site that I have been aware. I have seen them being loaded, but they are sitting still on site.
Okay.
So we're going to need another motion for this.
Is there possibly an issue with road bans? That he can't transport them or anything?
To be quite honest, I have no idea. Lori just texted me like 10 minutes before I turned this on to say to make sure to add this in and give those two options. So it is possible that road bans are on in certain places. I know that was the reason he couldn't take them to his farm and Smith. But for a reason why they can't go elsewhere, I don't know.
So the deadline was on the end of May, correct?
Yeah, it was, it was May 30th, which was Saturday.
Been no outreach from the owner?
No.
Looking for an extension or giving a reason why they're still on site?
Uh, no.
Okay, thanks.
And the fire chief is still concerned about it.
Absolutely.
Right.
So what are you asking Sam to give an extension, but he's not asking for an extension?
No, what I'm asking for is a decision from the NPC about whether or not we do enforcement or we give them an extension. Because I, I can't as a development officer make that, that decision. It has to come from the NPC.
So I'd like, I'd like to know if there are any road bans still currently in place. Like can we, a decision, can we, we can make a decision pending, pending the information about the road bans? Could?
Yeah.
Road bans in, in place, then there's no excuse not to have it off the lot.
Yeah, we're just assuming that, right? It could be anything, he could just be bucking the system too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can't, we can't put a motion forward under item three anyway, can we? Well, do we need, we need a motion, we need a decision, make a motion on it, right? Okay, can we move that to four C?
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody that we just address it under development permit applications?
That's fine for me.
Okay.
Sure, if we can address it, like we don't even know why, right? So.
So Lori informed Sam 10 minutes before the meeting started that we need to have discussion on this. And then Sam is telling us that she doesn't have the authority to move forward with any decisions or discussion with the applicant and that it's up to the M T, NPC to make a decision on what we want to do with it.
And you could provide an extension until we have information?
Yeah.
And then say enforcement happens after this date.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll take care of that under four C. Okay. Okay, so moving on to four A, we have Laura Ghostkeeper discretionary use page eight.
Okay, so the purpose of this report is for the municipal planning commission to consider an application for type E home-based business of personal services for a hairstylist within the R3 high density residential district. Now Ms. Ghostkeeper has been part of the Spectrum Salon, I believe, and apparently is trying to open in the basement of the townhome that she rents currently. She says she'll utilize the basement of the townhouse with all of her surfaces located there. She has only one small car, which means that her driveway which holds two, as well as an attached garage, she has plenty of space to park for her clients, of which she expects up to six per day. There's no detached or sheds, so there's no, no way that the, the use can extend to outside buildings. And she won't have any employees. It'll be just her. She's staying for a maximum of six hours per day, with the operation being Monday to Friday, with one evening from seven to eight thirty. And there is no other home-based business on this site. The, the planning department has no concerns. It's a pretty low-key business.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion. To.
Long one.
Huh?
That long one.
Long one, yeah, I'm just scrolling here, what page is it?
Eleven, search at halfway down eleven to thirteen.
Oh, okay, there we go.
Sam?
All up.
Audrey's trying to call in and doesn't know what number.
It would be one of those ones that was listed.
She said that doesn't work. She's having a heck of a time.
Hmm.
It's that, it's that five eight seven number.
It doesn't work? Bryce, you seen the five eight seven number doesn't work?
No, it did, it worked for me. I, the video one wasn't working today for whatever reason.
Huh.
Sam, I'll follow her, no.
Is there another number?
There's usually four, that's what I was just looking up. So there's six, four, seven, three, seven, four, four, six, eight, five. And the meeting ID is seven, eight, zero, eight, four, nine, eight thousand and four. Because that's all they should, they should have to dial in and then give the meeting ID number.
Did you pass it on to Audrey?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so can I get, can I get a motion on the table and ask some discussion?
I'll make the mo, it's Bryce, I'll make the motion as.
As presenter. Okay, thank Bryce. Is there any discussion on this one? Nobody, okay, call the question those in favor.
Aye.
Carried. Thanks Bryce, thank you Bryce. Okay.
Page nineteen, if that helps.
Yeah, it's just. Where are we here? Okay, four, four B Ashley Barker, page nineteen. So once again, this purpose of.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, it worked.
I don't know what's going on.
I agree.
It's, I, I believe it's Zoom.
Okay, because it kept wanting me to sign in, but it didn't like any password I gave it.
Huh, that is really weird.
We're on page nineteen, Ashley Barker. Okay, so.
All right.
This is for a type E home-based business, personal services called beautifully bronzed within the R1 standard residential district. Yeah, okay. So the applicant wishes to operate a spray tan business from her home. And the goal is to build her business slowly, but she is aware that she can't start until phase two opens up. The applicant will utilize a bedroom in the basement of her single detached home where equipment utilized for the provision of services will be set up and stored. And when wished upon, she will be mobile to go to a client's homes. The applicant has indicated that her clients will arrive one at a time and she's anticipating up to 10 clients a day at her busiest time. There's no outside buildings to be utilized and the driveway can park three vehicles at this time, as well as there's an attached garage for their personal. The applicant has only, is the only person that will be employed and will operate a maximum of eight hours per day, Monday to Friday and every other weekend, with the weekends being from 10 to nine, regular days 10 to six. And there is no other home-based businesses on this site, so the planning department has no concerns.
Okay, and the motion is on?
Page twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
Can I get someone to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Who was that?
Audrey.
Oh, we saw Syed put his hand up first. Okay. Okay, is there any discussion? No, call the question those in favor.
Aye.
Audrey says aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Carried.
Okay.
Okay, now we're on to four C. So Audrey, we have, we have some business to take care of regarding Frank Wilson's application. He hasn't anything with the logs on this property and our fire chief is still concerned about it. So we have to possibly make a motion.
Basically what, what you want us, you can even direct administration.
Yeah, or maybe we can just direct administration. So there's a possibility that there's still a road ban on, but we're not sure. So I think we can just, this is under four C. We can just direct administration to investigate whether or not the road bans are still in place. And if they are, at what time, what date will they be removed? And then do we want to possibly give him so many days, once the road bans are removed, to get his, get his work done? Any thoughts?
How many days are you thinking?
I'm thinking maybe a week.
Yeah, I wouldn't have said longer than two myself, so I'm good with a week.
Okay, a week pending, pending whatever date the road bans have been removed. If there are no longer road bans, then do we want to extend it a week anyway?
But it hasn't been applied for or nothing, right? Like where, there needs to be some forth between the landowner as to what's going on, rather than just offer an extension for, for out of goodwill.
So Sean, that is typically the process, is that if they haven't contacted us and we know that the work hasn't been done, we contact the landowner and offer an extension if they haven't been able to get the work done.
And like you confirmed that the, the logs are loaded on the trucks, like they're not on the.
The shop is just down the street and I was there at lunchtime.
There's still quite a bit of number of logs still on the ground and a bunch on the truck.
Yeah, but nothing's been actually removed from, from the site.
Yeah.
So.
It appears, so I mean, it's really hard to tell, there's, there's still a whole ton of logs there. Yeah, I mean like.
So can we, does, would it, does everybody see it reasonable that we direct administration to find out what the status is on the road bans?
I, I, I'm good, go ahead. Once we establish all this stuff that, you know, getting into two months, basically by the time all this kind of ends up and, you know, it's, it's, if, if they can't get it worked out, it should go to enforcement, is my opinion.
Okay, so how, um, check on the road bans. If there is road bans, find out the date that they will be removed. And everybody's fine with the week, give them another week to remove.
Yes.
If there are no road bans, give them a week from today.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And Audrey's good with that too?
Okay.
Okay, and then, and then we'll move on to enforcement.
Should hopefully that not be needed.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need someone to make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Does anybody have any additions to it, or we're all good?
Can you, you please carefully read out exactly what the motion is, please, this time on this one?
Yeah, that NPC directs administration to investigate if there are road bans, when the dates, what the date is for removal and once removed, that the applicant has seven days to remove logs. However, if there is no road ban presently in place, that the applicant has seven days from today to remove the logs or enforcement will ensue.
And what does enforcement mean?
At this point, it would be a stop order.
Oh.
Oh, Dan, it's no longer on.
Oh, talking, yeah, we lost you Dan, we lost the visual.
Oh, I know. The question I have is, what does a stop order do to something that's on sale already?
It is.
Already stopped already.
Right, honestly, it is pretty much the only thing we can do. We could, we could levy a fine, but the likelihood is that the courts will throw it out.
Yeah, no, I understand that, yeah.
So the stop order is our, we'll call it biggest hammer in that our lawyers say to him that he has to have them removed. He gives them a timeline, he's already brought them on without a permit in the first place. It's just an avenue for us to use to, to enforce that this is what needs to happen and push him further along.
So with the stop order, he can't move forward with applying for revision to the land use bylaw. He can't start processing the wood on site. He can't start selling it off the site.
He needs to do the order issue first. Yeah.
And then I think maybe at some point, we may need some, do something with the fire chief. I think this is the fire chief's decisions should be coming into play when it's issues like this involved, so. So we have a motion on the table, I made the motion. Is there any more discussion, or is everybody clear on it?
It makes perfect sense, I just, I, I wonder what the conversation will be between the landowner and administration. It, maybe don't leave it as vague as road bans, maybe what the reason, if there's another reason? Like I think that discussion's very important. Maybe there's reason and just road bans, or maybe road bans are off kind of thing, right?
So, and why hasn't he contacted the town and say, hey, I, you know, I need more time or whatever?
I, I will be calling him tomorrow, just so you're aware, to find out what's going on and what is, what his plan is going forward. And then I will find out through operations whether or not there's road bans in the area. I will not take the landowner's words that there's road bans.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Does that satisfy what you're looking for, Sean?
Well, it makes sense, I just didn't want it to be so vague as to, you know, that, that works.
Awesome, okay, good.
Okay, so motion on the table, no more discussion. We have Bryce, oh, there's Dan, Bryce and Audrey.
Yeah, Bryce is in favor.
Okay, call the question those.
Bryce is in favor.
One, two, carried, thank you.
Awesome, thank you guys. Okay.
Okay, five eight, land use bylaw, D. Johnson, page thirty.
So the purpose of this report is for the NPC to provide counsel with a recommendation with respect to bylaw ten dash twenty twenty. Now this bylaw is being introduced, is coming forward because Mr. Price would like to add industrial equipment repair shop to the M4 small holdings district as a discretionary use. And the planning department consulted with quite a few actually, other municipalities with regards to this application. And none of the municipalities researched allow for residents in conjunction with an industrial use. And of all of the ones that they researched, only five allowed for a security suite, which had to be inside the industrial building. The planning department has issues with this amendment being added to the M4 small holdings district. As the map below figure one shows, most of these lots are relatively small. And Mr. Price is, of course, is just about the largest one. And in the, and even though these would be discretionary, this would still be hard to fit big trucks on most of these lots, let alone the training movement, having personal vehicles, having, because he does have a single-family residence on this property as well, that we're not sure when it was put on. So having said that, we, we recognize that this is a unique district, unique to Slave Lake. So we're, we're recommending that it has to be added. If this is where council wants to go, where NPC wants to go, then definitely make it a discretionary use. So it has to be considered on a site-by-site basis.
Okay, Sam, so I'm a little confused. So his request is to add industrial equipment repair shop, the M4.
Yeah.
But we're also looking at a residence on site? He doesn't want to do anything with the residence, right?
No, so the reason we're looking at this is because there is a residence on site, that use cannot be on a, typically on a lot for industrial work where there is a residence on site.
Okay, so industrial equipment repair shop is typically in what?
M1, M2.
M1, M2?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, so just to be clear, it's Bryce here. Typically municipalities don't allow residential uses in industrial areas as a whole. Doesn't matter whether it's M1 or M4 or whatever, just.
That is right. That is right, I looked at probably a dozen and I emailed some of them even because what our record, like our, our policy states for the different places that we have to look at is not like, three of those places allow for a security suite and that was it. And it had, of course, had to be inside the industrial building. So then I went broader because I was like, okay, none of these places are allowing for a residence on site. Maybe there's some place that's outside of our normal scope that we look at. And that told me of five places that allow a security suite, but absolutely no one allows for a residence on an industrial lot.
So, so, so I, I don't know the history here. I know that there's some trailers up on the other side of Balsam Road. Was it originally put in place so we didn't create non-conforming uses? Or what was the rationale behind allowing residential use? Do you know? Do you have that history?
I, I do not have that history.
I think Bryce, I seem to recall that that was, we wanted to bring them, we wanted them to conform, but they also at the time understood that with that residential component on that induc, industrial lot, that there were going to be definitely some restrictions, more restrictions that, that they would have to deal with. So I think this is one of them where the guy wants, he's got the residence on site now and now he wants to go backwards and add more industrial use onto the site.
Okay.
Which, which lot is he on? I just can't quite figure that out.
Okay, so if I go to.
She has like all of them, right? And its access is from Balsam Road, if I looked correctly on Google Maps.
His access is absolutely from Balsam Road. If you look at figure one, Audrey, his is three seventeen Balsam Road.
Okay, that's what I was just wondering what number he was at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, question, it's Dan here.
Yeah.
With something in the past, I mean, obviously nobody knows the, the real history of this. I would imagine it goes back quite a ways, the zoning in that area. Would it have been placed like this special M3 that you say is special to Slave Lake on kind of thing, because they grandfathered particular lots in the way that they were? And is it an extension of that or a kind of a go-around to add more industrial capability to it where they grandfathered, and that's what I'm curious.
My understanding is, is that Lori is not aware of when a residence went on that lot. And at, and what I understood was that they were to be only mobile homes, not actual, um, single-family detached dwellings. And that is what is on site. So.
That dwelling hasn't been built in the last couple of years.
No, it has been on there for a while.
So what's, uh, what's the zoning next to him? In five, three twenty-five, three twenty-five, four oh one, uh, M2. That's M2, but M2 does not allow residential use on the site.
It's Bryce, I have a question here.
Yeah.
Um, so when I'm looking at a map here, so I see like there's no access into, it's like, it shows like a cul-de-sac from Third Street Northeast, that cul-de-sac doesn't exist on the map. It just kind of shows like a bunch of trailers. Does he have all those lots that comprise that cul-de-sac as well?
No. They are accessed, so the cul-de-sac doesn't actually exist, but there is a gravel road that goes in through there that they all access through.
Okay, okay.
Well, isn't R1, one of our zonings in the industrial area that there can be a security suite?
Absolutely, actually, I think in most of them, they can have a security suite within the building.
Oh, it has to be within the building, it can't be an offsite.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think in three twenty-five, there's a suite in that, in that industrial building.
Yes, there is.
So now he's saying that he wants his, he wants his residence on site, plus he wants the.
Wants to add this use.
He wants to add this use, which is already within the what, M, you said M1?
M1 and M2, yeah.
M1 and M2. So what are the, what are all the industrial uses on the M4?
Give me a second to look it up, because I forgot to bring my land use bylaw. I was trying to make sure.
I, I have it, I have it pulled up.
Oh, yeah?
You want me to read it off? So the permitted uses, the permitted uses is accessory buildings and uses, custom manufacturing establishments, general contractor services, limited contractor services, offices ancillary to another permitted use, C cans and signs. And then there's some discretionary uses as well, quite a few. I can read those off if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead Bryce.
Okay, so the discretionary uses is accessory residential buildings and uses, animal care major, construction workforce facilities, home-based businesses type C only, major digital sign, minor digital sign, mobile homes, non-compliant buildings addition or all alterations to parking facilities, recreation establishment major and a relocatable industrial camp facility bunkhouse.
Yes.
So actually very, very light industrial if any.
Exactly.
That would be the general contractor services, limited contractor, transportation service provider, so that would be like hauling trucks.
Transportation service provider, I'd have to look up the definition for that, but, yeah.
So has he been? Sorry, go ahead Bryce.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, is, was the, it kept as a little bit lighter use because of the residential that was originally up there from years ago?
Absolutely, yeah, that was exactly why it was so light in use.
And in an ideal world, I mean, we don't have residential up there. So I think that's, you know, an industrial area first, that you're allowing the use of residential there, not kind of the other way around, if that makes sense.
I think I understand what you're saying.
I, I, I would, I guess I, I would just hate for, I mean, because that's the whole industrial area. I would hate for us to deny, you know, an industrial use because some homes more or less are grandfathered up there, right? That's kind of my concern, is we want to make that area more industrial. Hopefully over time, push the residential out, make it a fully, you know, industrial area. That's my. That's my opinion on the matter anyways.
So Sam, I'm not clear, like what are we adding to the, the bylaw? Because when you look at his, in application, they just said they want to repair their own equipment. So do we need to change the bylaw just for their own equipment? Well, he's saying that, but he has a renter that wants to come in and do ambic inspections and repairs from his shop. As the renter, I can't approve that use because the use listed underneath the M four, which is why he's bringing this forward now. Gotcha.
So it's for a renter with a different business?
Yes.
And who's living in the house?
He is, Bryce, Bryce, Mr. Price, Bruce Price, I think his name is.
And it's Dee Johnson that's renting?
Dee Johnson is, is the, is, Mr. Price owns, like that's the, the company he owns.
Oh, okay.
It's a different company altogether, they're not the landowner, they can't bring the application forward.
Okay.
Okay, that's all, that makes sense.
This is
Yeah.
So the M four right now, the way it says is to provide for light industrial development with residential, residential development to be permitted at the discretion of the MPC. Any residential development is to be associated directly with an approved industrial development. Light industrial. So the use that he wants to add is already in the M, M one and M two, which is heavy industrial.
It's light industrial and heavy, um, what's it called, sorry.
Light industrial and manufacturing uses.
And then if you turn the page over, we, no, M two, no, one more time. General industrial, which is the heavy industrial.
So it's an M two?
No, it's an M four, but I'm just, but the use that he wants to add already exists in the M one and the M two?
Yeah.
So if we take the house out of the equation, the industrial that he wants to add does not mix with the industrial or the rating for the area, correct?
Right.
So then that should be the discussion, right?
Yeah, so if we remove the house, then he could actually apply because he's adjacent to, what's the zone?
M two.
M two, he can actually apply to have his, his lot rezoned M two. And then the use that he wants is actually included in that zoning.
I, I don't physically remove the house right now, that's not the discussion that we're talking about. The discussion is that he wants to put heavy industrial in an area that's not heavy industrial.
That's right, that is true.
At the time, shouldn't have any bearing on a discussion in the end actually, because it boils down to the
What is, what is the intention of the zone, M four?
Yeah.
So unless
It's, it's a use that he wants to add, so he wants to, he wants to amend the land use by law. I just don't see how he can how we can even approve that.
Well, the size of the lot is, is a problem too, because
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Price has big trucks too, I don't know about the renter, but I mean, if he's going to be fixing big, bigger equipment, you're gonna need the room, right? So And he does have bigger service trucks, like a oil field type service truck.
So he's already he's already practicing that use on his lot.
Yes. Okay, so we're just making it formal then? Yes. Yes, and making it the ability that he can rent out to add to the use.
Personally, I, I have no problem with adding the use as a discretionary use. I mean, that's something that if it doesn't fit for that particular property, we could always deny it down the road. I mean, so you're not getting a really, really, really small lots. In his case, I actually don't have an issue with it because where, especially where he's situated, he's right next. If I'm looking correctly, to the M one and M two. It's not like he smacked out right in the middle of the M four.
That is true.
That's right, it's just the fact that he's adjacent to that kind of makes a point. And yeah, Bryce, I was kind of thinking the same thing, that we we include that use, but we place it under the, in the discretionary
Yes, absolutely.
Which is what, what we had put forward.
Yeah.
So we could put a, a time limit too, like three or six months or something to see if it's working, right?
Do you anticipate any issues?
I don't anticipate issues with what's already on site.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if the neighbors have issues with it at all.
So if, if this rezoning goes through, then does he have to apply for another?
The only way we could put a time limit on it Julie is if it was CDC. Well, we put conditions on other motions. Like a six month check in or something. That's part of the land use by law already for the home based businesses. That's not a, a use or a time limit already in place in our land use by law to add to it. Even as a condition of the motion? Because right now, this is just a recommendation to council. So this is, do you want to recommend, recommend to support this or do you want to not recommend to support this by law going forward? Okay, gotcha. If this was a, I'm coming, I want my, my use, then it could be a, a recommendation for time limit there. But this is, this is a bylaw amendment, so we can't put a time limit in for that. Right, so it's got to go to council, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think making it discretionary use would probably work with the size of the lots. So we could, we could definitely turn down, um, in the future, turn something down just based on the fact that they want to have this use within such a small lot. This lot is, to me, it looks like it's almost three times the size as the other M fours.
Yeah.
In fact, maybe even more. So, okay, so there is a motion requested, Sam, where is, on page thirty-two?
I'll make the motion that the MPC supports bylaw number ten twenty twenty.
And that is to add where we what's the use, sorry.
Industrial equipment repair shop.
And that's to add industrial equipment repair shop as a discretionary use to the M four.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so Bryce made the motion, is there any discussion?
So is it, is it okay to have a, a house on, in M four, like is, is that going to be a question or not?
That would not be part of the question.
Yeah.
Presently, we don't have it as a ability to have a house on an M four lot, it's supposed to be a mobile home. However, I have no idea when the home got on that lot.
We don't, we don't even have any all that information would have been destroyed in the fire.
I would have had to prove that it was never there prior to a date. And that's pretty much impossible right now.
So right now, you know, we are only talking about bylaw ten twenty twenty and sounds good.
Okay, so Bryce made the motion, is there any more discussion? Call the question, those in favor?
Bryce is in favor.
Audrey?
Audrey's in favor.
Okay, Carrie.
Awesome.
And was that it?
The only thing I wondered is the way you brought the recommendation, it says does not recommend.
I, I do not recommend it, yes.
Yeah.
The motion has to be in the positive.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
And MPC, MPC supported the motion.
Okay, no, good enough, I just was double checking.
Yep, and you're sure that it's discretionary?
Yes, so when it has the, the three behind it, that means it's three on there, which is discretionary uses. So it would be section one oh four, which is M four, number three, which is discretionary.
I'm just scrolling back and forth and my confusing. Okay, back to the agenda, that was five A, okay, so item six proposed subdivisions, nothing. Seven, other business. Eight, MPC development concerns. Anybody have any concerns out there in the community? No? Uh, nine, meeting review, next meeting?
Our next called scheduled meeting is for June twenty-second, if we have any items. And then our regularly scheduled meeting will be July thirteenth.
July thirteenth?
Yes, because of the long weekends being in the middle there.
So we got June twenty-second?
Yeah.
And July thirteenth?
Yeah.
Everybody get that? Hopefully by then we won't be on Zoom anymore. Fingers crossed.
That's what I'm crossing for.
Okay, that's it, meeting adjourned, meeting adjourned, thanks everybody.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.